Ready?
No.
So.
At the time of this meeting.
Let's get a bigger one.
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hans Klumson. I'm chairman of the Village Official Planning Board. I'll be the Village Official Planning Board to order for the August twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting. Well, the secretary, please take roll call to establish quorum.
Teresa Cattello, Anthony Rigerio.
Here.
Ezra Holly, Joe Testa, Cassandra Williams Hunt.
Yeah.
And others in attendance are Kristen Pajee, Village Engineer, Sarah Brown, Village Planner, and Cassandra Britton, Planning Attorney.
Okay.
And Tricia Rice, the liaison to the.
I don't think that's official yet, but I'm here as a resident.
Yeah.
In spirit, yeah.
Let's.
Soon to come.
I'd like to introduce Cassandra Williams Hunt as our alternate member to the planning board. Welcome. Uh, you will be a voting member tonight. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the July seventeenth, twenty twenty five minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, okay. Proposed. Carried. Okay. First item on the agenda is Crystal Bliss nine eighty-two Main Street for sign approval. Would the applicant please come forward and then?
Hello, topics show from fast signs. I'm here representing Crystal Bliss Spa. Um, we're proposing a pretty standard sign for the plaza. It conforms with all height and width regulations as far as the area square footage. Um, the signage is a standard uh channel letter illuminated uh sign internally illuminated with red letter, which also kind of conforms with all the other white uh signs that are in the plaza. They're built in this very similar format and color. Um, there is no uniformity for the font that's been in the plaza. Um, pretty straightforward, just a standard channel letter sign on a raceway uh that's being installed on the facade.
Do you have color samples?
I thought they were included in the packet.
Oh, here.
Yeah, all the packet.
Sorry.
Yep. Your standard red, translucent red.
Okay.
I I am not here proposing that.
So it's the, this is the only colors.
Yeah, it's literally just a red. The can is black, uh, so it's got a black side can. Uh, it'll read very easily. It's not gonna have the red kind of bleeding to red. Uh, and the raceway that is in the back is going to match the facade color of the building.
Hey, Cassandra, do you have any questions?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if if uh the billing inspector is here, but I guess it's a question for Sarah. So in the photo here, they're showing a lot of other signage. Is all of that going away or is that conformity or?
Um, I actually don't review the signage application, so.
That's next, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's next department. Um, but I would assume that they are. They look like maybe they're temporary signs that are taped up until.
Okay. Uh, I mean, it's covering everything.
If I can address it, uh, to my understanding, the answer is yes. Obviously, they're now open there because they don't have any additional signage. Um, they, I believe the only remaining signage uh would be where you see Crystal Bliss above the doors and what is on the right door. Um, I believe is the only permanent signage that we installed. Um, the additional signage was put up by the client. Obviously, the now opening is could be coming down as soon as the branding goes up.
But the Crystal Bliss in white on the glass and what's on the doors is proposed to say?
I believe that was, or I think that already went through as a permit, I believe. I'm not certain.
Yeah, but it's just, right, it's the whole doors are covered and then the look open, but I mean, you can't even. I mean, evidence covered. I just don't know if Nick.
The um, so the like the right side definitely is um more of a trans uh that is just a cut vinyl that I'm aware of.
That's the.
Yeah.
Crystal Bliss.
Unless they put something in that I'm not aware of, I didn't install any of the colored items that you see there. Especially to the right, the left, and even the now opening that was installed by the client. Uh, my assumption is that's gonna be coming down. They're gonna have their branding at this point.
Just a question I can follow up with Nick.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Honestly, based upon the approval of the actual sign, I could, you know, obviously tell the client that it would be the intent to remove the now opening sign and everything else once the new sign is up.
Okay.
This is actually kind of funny when you, I'm glad I didn't supply that. It says now open, opening. And it's, yeah, said now open, but anyway.
I'm I'm assuming that they comply. Nick hasn't uh sent us a memo. He's not here tonight. Uh, what we can do is approve the sign. And when he investigates and finds out that uh the other signage is not allowed, uh, they would be forced to take the sign down and come back.
Yeah.
For further approval. Is that right, Board?
Yeah, that's okay, Rick.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Uh, motion to accept, uh, yeah, motion to accept the Crystal Bliss Spa signage as proposed and the colors as submitted.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's speak up a little.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And uh, do we have to wait for the permit uh at that point?
Yes.
Was there a, okay.
You have to see Nick for the, for the actual permit.
Will be notified.
Nick, Nick would be the actual issuing of the permit.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is VIP Salon Salon Barber Shop, uh, ten oh four Main Street, Suite thirteen. The applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Hello, so I'm not the guys who are making the, the sign, but I'm on the audio of the barbering. So the guy's gonna make a sign, so he's, he's taking and giving me all the information. I have the samples too. And the size is gonna be acrylic, the base is one, uh, one inch base, the weight is uh ten feet by uh one inch and thirty-three feet, and the height is gonna be like a fourteen feet. And they're, they're gonna use the drops. It's a foam moving and a special, a special PVC films and the white, it's a white gloss. The color, I have the color right here, and the letters is like a be the three eight. And the gra, and the, yes, the graphic weight is gonna be like a, a hundred seventy ounce or a three and sixteen eight. The color is gonna be white. And uh, the company is moving, they're installing, then we see that Rayus Drywall LLC. So I have all the example right here.
Got the other samples?
Yes.
But we're looking at just this one sign, correct? VIP Salon Barber Shop?
Yes, it's gonna be just an updated sign.
And where is this? Where's ten oh four Main Street?
It's like a Main Street place.
I know.
Oh. Is this where, are you going where the other barber shop was?
Yes, is there like a, the same things where before was the King Barber?
Yeah, yeah, right between the uh laundromat and.
The dry cleaners next to the.
Center and what was the?
Right.
Right, the flower shop or whatever that was, yeah, okay. Do you know this sign here is the same size as a sign?
Yeah, the same size. I have all the information right here. The guy says supposed to be, gonna be busy today, so it's, it's possible it's coming.
Will we see the color samples, please?
I don't have.
Second, second.
Where is that?
I have a copy.
Um, red, but isn't it green on there? Color is that? That's brown. So what color is the sign gonna be?
Is it there on there? Is that the color of the sign?
White color, gold color. But this looks different than this.
That's against, uh, I have the original paper. That's against for the, you know, they make it predated, you make a damage, but that's the color of the sign.
So it's gonna be this color?
Yes.
What's?
That's gonna be the letters.
It's gonna be the what?
The letters.
The letters, oh, so, so actually, so what's submitted is not, because that's white, white lettering and.
Fine.
That's only, it's gonna be sent in, you know, that's the names to the building, the titles.
Uh huh.
It's gonna be sent in.
Okay. Hans, I don't, I don't know how you handle. So what's submitted in the paper is not.
Correct example.
It's not correct, right? So the coloring is going to be whatever color this is.
Yeah.
And the lettering is. So.
That's a protective.
Oh, all right, so it's gonna be the white.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so the, the, the lettering is correct.
The white part is all right. They had the color here.
What's the color?
Number six, A two C two C.
There's no echo sovereign. There's no lettering on that. Uh, and we have nothing from Nick? I mean, I don't.
No, we have no uh, nothing from Nick as far as the memo goes. Again, we could approve it based on the color samples.
Can you do it? We, I know it's signage, but can we do it subject to the building inspector's approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, it'd be okay if that's, if you're okay, I mean.
I'm fine with that, you know, the, the building inspector finds that that.
Yeah, it doesn't.
That color is not white or it's too big, he's gonna.
Or the same, yeah, it's not the same um, the size and everything, right? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. Then he needs to verify that it's the same as this.
Well, I guess it would be because that color is not what he wants.
This color.
This color.
He wants this.
Yes.
He wants this. Okay.
Right, so in the past, that's why the board doesn't accept the actual paper printout because how it prints on the paper doesn't actually match the color sample. So we always do it based on the sample on file, not on.
Okay, but we could do a motion subject to the color sample submitted upon verification of size and color by the building inspector.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you okay with?
I'm all right.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, are you, I don't know. Do we keep these, huh?
Yes, we keep them. We're fine.
No, sorry, lose it? Okay. Thank you.
Sandra, do you have any comment?
No, I'm in agreement.
You can, Sandra.
I'm in.
I'll bring your mic.
Oh.
So you can talk with Mike.
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with.
Okay.
Going with the actual.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
So a motion to approve the uh VIP Salon Barber Shop uh signage upon the uh submittal of the uh color sample and the written, and the, the letter samples. Um, and upon verification of the size, the shape, and the color samples from the building inspector.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion second and four, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Okay, well, so.
We have to wait for.
You see the building inspector on either tomorrow or Monday and get a permit.
All right.
You'll get the sign permit then.
All right.
Okay.
Much.
Right. Welcome to the Village of Fishville. Next item on the agenda is forty-two Jackson Street Certificate of Appropriateness. The applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Hello, everyone. Eric Nissagoli.
Formic, Ellen B Architects. Good evening.
And?
Hi, Chairman, how are you? Uh, essentially, uh, we're here tonight for.
Uh, could I have your name for the record, please?
Sure, Mike McCormick.
Just for the record, Mike, I know who you are.
I know, I know you know. It's okay.
What do you wish to do?
Sure, so uh, we're looking at uh forty-two Jackson Street and essentially we're putting on and, and in addition on the second floor, as you can see on the plans, as well as changing the roof line from a, pretty much a low slope roof to a hip um pitch roof, gable end, and doing some really niceties to the property itself. Um, I think if you look at this diagram here, which is the elevations, it shows you what the intended elevations look like and the architectural fabric. And then you certainly have the existing conditions, chair and black and white. They just don't look as nice, so. Uh, so essentially, we're here tonight for, you know, appropriateness for the architecture itself. Looking forward to the board's comments.
Planning?
This is certificate of appropriateness, so we don't review those.
Right.
Um, I don't know if, did you, do you know the color samples? Are the, the colors being changed, I'm assuming, from the, or is it same, or being the same?
No, not at the sun. Not, no, not right now.
It's just purely for the architectural look.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, okay.
So you're not looking really at the colors or will be at the overall part?
Anthony?
What is the addition? Or?
Really the second floor.
Second.
We're just really squaring off.
Squaring off the back, right?
Exactly. Yeah, maybe ten, yeah, twelve.
I think it'll blend into the.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to the other ones.
It's similar right to the other one there, Geraldine's house.
So, yeah, um. The, yeah, it was next to them, then the other one, right?
Right.
And we're not looking at colors, we're just looking at architectural, right?
Right. Because they're, they're not changing the color of the structure, they were just looking.
Squaring it up.
Just.
So.
No, neither do I. I think it looks fine. It blends in with the rounding houses there. Sandra, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. Seems to blend in with the community as far as I'm, I can see uh in the colors of the structure and state is same. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to prove the certificate of appropriateness for forty-two Jackson Street.
Uh, a motion to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the architecture as uh presented on the uh uh submitted drawings of what, uh, they did, the ones dated August seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second? Have a motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Have a good evening. Good morning.
Next item on the agenda is eighteen Church Street. Continuation of certificate of appropriateness and site plan approval. Applicant, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Hello. Hello, good evening. I'm Alex Salamo. I work for Whalen Architecture. We're the architects uh for this project. Um, I'm a little, has, it says continuation. Have you guys seen this before or is this brand new to you? The board, let me. Okay, it was a while ago.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago because you had to go.
Yeah, it, it predated the rezoning of the property and the ZBA application is currently happening, so the board hasn't seen it in a while.
Okay, so I could uh refresh everyone's memories if that, that serves uh everyone well. Uh, so, yeah, this is the property between the elementary school on Church Street. Um, there's actually two buildings, two structures on the property. One's a um single family home and then there's a, a formwork now, I guess, commercial building. I guess it was a reptile shop and, or something else before that's been vacant for a pretty long time. Um, so the idea that we're proposing is to put a two-unit uh residential building in that former commercial building. Um, so in order to do that, we had to change the zoning uh via the board of trustees and a couple of you look familiar, so you probably familiar with, with that process. So we just finished that process. It was approved. We have, the zoning has been changed to an R fifty zone. Um, but that still will, will not let us build two units in that building because the, the density of the zoning, I believe it's um supposed to be um, I don't have it on here. Yeah, we're changing it from fourteen dwellings per acre to twenty-two to fit the three units. So it's a little above the standard, so for that, we need to get a zoning variance, and that's triggering our planning board review um, as well. Um, we are in receipt of the letter um from H and H here. Um, and I'm a little, do we need a certificate of appropriateness from you? Is that one of the things we need? And I would assume we need permission to, to connect the sewer and water if we're gonna have a new connection.
Uh, well, to start off with, the initial application back in February or whenever it was, uh, didn't include the, that other structure, just to they wanted to just this one building here. Now you're saying that there's two structures on the property?
Yes.
Are, are you, you're only gonna work on the old uh reptile or last place that one and leave the other structure alone?
Yes, that's the idea. I'm, it will be site work in be, in between.
That, that comes on. The microphone comes off if you want it.
Sure. Yeah, so I, I wasn't around at the first submission. Um, I'm unaware. Is that something we can amend or?
No, I think it was just a clarification.
Okay.
So the property itself, the, the single family home on the Academy Street frontage is also located on the same property, so that's the second. But I think the chairman's question was just verifying that there's no changes to that, and that's gonna remain a single family home.
Yes, that, that would be a single family home. Um, that's on this, on the Academy Street side and the other building, the former glass or reptile shop is in the other corner of the property.
Now, are you going to? And, you know, see your park, we're looking at your parking here of but don't extend your parking, is that gonna infringe upon that other houses, other house? You can be taking away any yard or anything to that effect to, to increase your parking?
I mean, it's, there is a, a fence now, which I think we would have to take down. Um, you know, probably make some kind of buffer. They'd still have some backyard, kind of you know, smaller than it was, but, you know, that's kind of the way it is now. The fence doesn't really blend itself to a, a great.
Well, what I'm getting at is I understand you're gonna need the parking, so you're moving over. So how much of the property from the house are you taking over to accommodate your parking? Because some, somewhere's along the line, if that house is sold to another person. Uh, I think our lawyer, what do we need here?
Well, it's one lot, so they can't sell the house without subdividing. I don't think it's possible to subdivision because it's such a small lot.
People can't, you can't just sell it unless you've subdivided completely. You could have an agreement where someone else live in it, but you can't sell partial, it wouldn't be a full, full fee like sale because they would be able to sell the property and be alienated from.
So they would be allowed to take some of that space for additional parking for their.
So long as the same owner, yes. I mean, it's their yard, so they can, you know, they're allowed to, and it's one lot, correct?
Right, it's one lot.
So they can, yeah, they can configure it however they want and, and the only thing that would stop that is a private agreement between the landowner and, you know, I mean, a private, and if it's a being rented, like a private agreement between a renter and a landowner. That's the only thing that would stop it, but the planning board doesn't enforce the agreement, so.
Okay, and we understand it's tight. I mean, there's the parking, you know, unless we got a, a variance for the parking requirement. You know, we're trying to fit the four spaces with one ADA space and a van aisle in there. Uh, we'd love to reduce that, but that's, that's the requirement and, you know.
Okay, so you're saying that you're allowed two, but you want three?
Units in the back, yes.
So you're.
Or units on the property, sorry.
So you're going to the ZBA for a variance?
Yeah, and it's actually to do with the density of what's allowed, how many units are allowed on the property through a variance.
Have you gone to the ZBA yet?
I bel, there was a meeting last week, was that ZBA? So we've introduced it. I wasn't at that meeting, but um Steve um from our firm was.
Wait, wait. The sheet says here, one studio and one two-bedroom. That's not correct? You're doing three?
In the, in the new building, or not the new building, the um, the commercial building?
Yeah.
Yeah, two units, that's it. So if it's a studio and a two-bedroom, um.
I thought you said three.
Well, there's two units on the property, right? We gotta think of the entire property because the single family house.
Considering the house the other year.
That's the, the, the first unit.
Yeah, that's what, that's what got me confused is I was to, you, you said two to three, now all of a sudden.
Existing single family house plus two units.
Yes, nope.
Commercial firehouse, whatever the heck it was.
Correct.
There's a blacksmith shop originally, yeah. Sarah?
Yes. Um, so we did provide a comment memo. Um, just procedurally, uh, like we were just discussing, this is currently before the zoning board of appeals seeking the variance to allow three dwellings on the property. Two in the previously commercial building and then the single family home. Um, their public hearing was set, and that's set for September eleventh. So if they are successful at the ZBA, they would have their variance in place before your next meeting. Um, so a public hearing will be required for the application. Um, if the board feels that the application is complete, you can set that uh tonight. And the application will also be required to be referred to Duchess County Planning for review. Um, a few comments that we had on the site plan itself. Um, if you could just uh, update the plans to note the square footage of each proposed apartment in the building that's being renovated. Uh, the single family home we know is just one unit. Um, also, eh, the site plan should know um the existing fence, if the existing fence in the gravel parking area that's there right now, if it's gonna be abandoned. Um, it appears that it will be because you're putting in the new paved spots, so some of that area that right now is gravel parking should probably be grass over, which will give additional um. Should probably be grass over, which will give additional um green space on the property. Um, if you could just label that, if it's green space, if it's gonna be grass or if there's gonna be other plantings with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then any proposed lighting that is going to be. Proposed for the building will also need to be shown on the plan with some photometric information.
Exterior lighting.
Exterior lighting. And then um those fixtures that are proposed will also be part of your certificate of appropriateness that this board will be looking at.
Okay, so from the planning board, in the end, we're gonna get a certificate of appropriateness and a site plan. Review or?
Approval, yes. So you have two applications before the planning board. One is certificate of appropriateness because they act as the architectural review board. And then the second is the site plan approval.
And both of those can happen at the same public hearing?
Yes.
You're gonna have to amend the uh application to include a certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
It is listed on the agenda, so I don't know if maybe they have submitted that application to Nick. Uh, Steve Willen may have done that.
Okay, you can check on that.
Yeah, if he updated it, we just kind of went to the zoning part and then I was, we were happy to, you know, oblige this board as well.
Somewhere's on the paperwork, it's.
Yeah, I know, paperwork, yeah.
We can't approve something that you're not asking for.
Right, absolutely.
Also, on the house, the existing house. Uh, I'm familiar with that. It has a driveway or a little parking spot for that house.
Yeah, right on the left side of the.
Are you going to eliminate that?
Um, no, the I I believe.
Uh, yeah, if you show it on for those plans.
But it's gonna have to stay for the parking requirement of the the single family home. Um, there, you know, the. Yeah, I I guess the, I guess they could use one of those four spots, but I believe the the. The intent of the the zoning code is two spa- two spaces per dwelling unit. So um, you know, that would, those four spots would be for the. The commercial building and then the the um, single family residents would have the the kind of existing spot they have. Um, I'm sure zoning department's kind of. Affirm or or ask for more parking or.
Is is a handicap parking spot required?
It it's not specifically. Sorry, it's not specifically required by the zoning code, but it may be by the building code. Um, that would be Nick's department. I apologize if it's required there.
I think it's just N B A.
It just has to be A D A.
I think it's a civil. I don't think it's noted in building code.
So, sir, I don't know the media talk I have that's typically uh multifamily. Residences newly built, like all buildings should have one standard parking spot. But the building code, but the building inspector will know that. Yeah, it's not a building, it is an A D A thing, but it's not a building, it's a, uh, sure.
Yeah, they're kind of, the issue is no one can park there. It's it's gonna be, you know, unless someone. You know, can has a disability in in the building, it's just gonna be empty.
Well, that that's my question here. This is, well, it's fine. This is. Person with a disability does rent. Okay, it's necessary, but if. That you don't have a person renting when it has a disability, that's a. A space there that's gonna constantly be open.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it was a possibility, we could um maybe use some porous paving or something and dress it up a little bit, but. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of, we'll have to review that too. I mean, you know, we're kind of. Thrown it. So is there there other? Would we need permission to to tap the the sewer connection for the the second building or or water from you guys or?
So Hans, if I if I can, I, we did issue a a comment memo back in February.
Okay.
Um, I'll I'll hand you this when we're done here.
Okay.
Um, and I'll make sure that we get you an electronic copy. Um. Nothing has changed on the site plan since they were here, so we didn't issue a new a new letter. All of our comments remain pertinent. So I can just run through them quickly. Um, we're asking that all the existing features be shown on the uh on the plan. Uh, existing utilities, fencing, significant trees and landscaping, utility poles. Um, any existing features that approach onto adjacent property shall also be identified if there are any. Um, existing proposed elevations uh in the form of spot elevation should be shown to demonstrate adequate drainage and accessibility. For the new sidewalks and parking areas. Um. The application should provide information on existing water sewer, water and sewer service and whether or not any improvements to the services are required to accommodate the proposed use. And the proposed change in use. So if you are proposing uh new water and sewer connections. Um, you can refer to the village code, there uh the water and sewer sections there that talk about um new. Service connections and what the requirements are relative to um inspections and materials and. And that whole process and and any permits that are required. And those should also be, those requirements should be noted on the plan too. So. Take a look at the water and sewer sections in the in the village code. Um. The plans relative to the the proposed paved parking spaces along Church Street. Um, the proposed ADA aisles are shown over an existing sidewalk. Um, so we're just asking them to clarify if um that sidewalk is to remain and if it is not to remain. Um, just to identify how um uh tenants are intended to access the uh. The building from the parking spaces, make sure that there's actually a a pedestrian route to the building. So identifying where the actual, you know, ingress and egress is at the building and then, you know, what that path, what that route is and from the parking areas.
I'm assuming, yeah.
Um, the southerly parking space is very close to your point, um Hans, to the existing two-story residence. Um, so we're just asking that you respond and add any additional detail to the plot uh to the plans relative to potential impacts for that new parking area. On that existing residence. Um. And if there's any mitigation required for headlights, noise or, you know, bollard protection or anything like that, because it is, it is very close.
Yes.
Um, and there's an existing utility pole that looks like it's in the vicinity of the su- southern parking space. It's not shown on the plan. Um, so we're just asking that you show that and make sure that that's not a conflict. Um, it may not be where it just looked from aerials and and stuff that it it potentially could be. Um. Asking that you also indicate refuse containers if you, I'm assuming it's just gonna be curbside. Uh, pickup, uh, but if that's either way, if that's the case, then note it on the plan. If not, if there is gonna be some sort of central dumpster, that should be shown too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then adding construction details for any proposed site improvements. So.
Mm-hmm.
Concrete or asphalt parking areas, sidewalks, you know, water and sewer service. Um, any landscaping, any bollards, any any site improvements that are proposed, there should be construction details for them. Um, and our last comment was just reiterating, um, uh Sarah's about uh showing landscaping and lighting if there are any proposed.
Right, um, yeah, yeah. So, you know, there's definitely some some work to do on the site plan on our end. And I appreciate that list and and your comments. Um, yeah, is there um? Right now, is there a curb cut kind of um? Uh, process or is that, because right now that sidewalk, it's pretty, it's just on kind of the same level as the. Um. Asphalt is for the road on Church Street. So I mean, it seems to me that if there's like a, there's a village sidewalk detail with a curb, I'm assuming or something.
Yeah, there is a village sidewalk and the sidewalk has to be remained because the kids walk to school.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I mean, I think what's there now is a little substandard. So, you know, obviously, you know, if we're improving it, we we wanna make it work.
I don't have the plans in front of me, but I, the the parking should be shown completely within the property and out of the village right of way, so it doesn't impact any sidewalks.
Okay.
So there should be no, no one parked. In the village right of way.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
And also that uh they're gonna have to show. Because there there is the theoretical s- uh curb cut there where the, when the uh. Last place was there, but now you're going over further. So you're gonna probably have to replace the sidewalk. From uh. Where you're parking, from the start of where your parking is, all the way to the start of where the structure is because. You're probably gonna have a. What sidewalk, six inches? So you're gonna, you you can't drive a car six inch, over a six inch sidewalk. You're gonna have to. Tape for that sidewalk there.
Exactly. So that's why we're asking for elevations also to have, see how that all, that is all gonna work.
Yeah, yeah.
Proposing one large curb cut for that entire swath, um. Or if it.
Well, I mean, right now, like, I have to like assume this. Existing gravel area and it's just like a sidewalk at the same level as as the pavement, more or less, and it's not like a curb.
Right.
Really there. So, you know, if we are gonna be. You know, designing and engineering uh kind of the sidewalk and parking area, um. You know, we could consider all that and we'll get the existing kind of conditions all verified. Um, it sounds like. Um. Probably be, if we got a a civil engineer involved in this, you know, that's probably easier than than us trying to um. You know, do it as an architect. Um, okay, so that's all good to to know. And um. You know, I'm sure there's gonna be, you know. Did some kind of buffer in the back, redo that fence, you know, probably some planting or landscaping on on. Probably the the parking lot side, just to to spruce it up a little bit. And then you have to be able to walk out of your car. And eat uh enter the building like you said. Okay, there, so we have to get the certificate appropriateness and site plan approval. And we have your your memo here from February and we have the H and H uh letter. Um. So all that being said, we have the zoning meeting in September. And that's a public hearing, so we should, unless we're adjourned, we should, we should have a some verdict there. Um. Your next meeting is probably the end of September.
Next meeting would be September eighteenth.
Eighteenth, so I don't know if that's in, is, you know, if we really submitting a site plan, I don't know if we're gonna be ready for the public hearing by then. Um, I guess you guys would determine that, right? Oh, yeah.
Sorry, and I just didn't want to interrupt. Um, back on the parking, I, there's, I think we've. Kind of talked around in circles and but the, like, you don't include, so this isn't the issue all overall, that it's not a cohesive site plan. And your parking requirements don't match the zoning code. And part of the reason they don't match is because you you you're not putting in existing two-story, but you, all your calculations need to have both properties. So your zoning table needs to have both buildings, like, and like all all your parking needs to have both buildings. Because you, I think you actually are required four, but it's not for the calculation you have here. You still require two for the single family residence. And then you're gonna require three more. And you should, and then I would use the word dwelling instead of units, because then it's also confusing because it doesn't match the code.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that will clear some of it up. Um, and then. You need to show the parking space on the other side, so we're talking about.
Right, and there should be.
Yeah, and.
This plan.
Could add to, you know.
Five.
Yeah, you have to play around with like how everything has to be shaded across to show the entire. Setback. So everything needs to encompass, it's one single site plan.
Got it, yeah, one site plan, two buildings, right? So, yeah, well, you know, I think we were a little. You know, we were trying to. Get the process going, so, you know, now is the time for us to figure all this out, so um thank you for all your comments.
So what I was gonna say about next steps, um, it sounds like you have some homework to do. Um, and. If we were to set the public hearing for tonight, we would have, you know, presumably, if you could get this turned around in two weeks. And back to the board for their review for their September eighteenth meeting, we could presumably set a public hearing. However, this needs Duchess County Planning approval as well. And we have to have a complete plan to go to county planning.
Mm-hmm.
And.
We're not ready.
They get thirty days, yeah, so we're not there. So even if we did set the public hearing for September. We wouldn't have county review, so we wouldn't be able to do anything anyway. I think probably the wisest thing to do would be to. Update the plans, make the submittal to this board. Have another review with this board and then we can send it on to county planning and set the public hearing.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I I think so, it's, you know, we can't do this in two weeks either, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so if we go to zoning in September eleventh. You know, that's a separate track. I'm glad we can do these concurrently. Um, and um. You know, basically, the the, I guess, the submission deadline for the October meeting is gonna be towards the end of September.
Yeah, Jenny, is it two weeks before the meeting day?
Yeah, it's two weeks. It's October second.
Is that Jenny over there?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I have the receipts for that meeting too. I can give you those if you want them. Um, okay, great, yeah, I think that's, I don't, you know, I'd love to get it done next month, but I don't think uh it's fair to either of us, so. Um, all right, we'll look for the, an October, you know, in our heads and um. Um, so if you adjourn this or?
And uh. And the zoning information on page two there says uh. Town uh township and it says town village of Fishkill. Couldn't it just be village of Fishkill?
Absolutely, yeah.
So you eliminate the town. Cassandra, you have any questions?
Um, I don't have questions. Um. I will say, I definitely agree with what was brought up as smart as the sidewalk. Um, there is a lot of children, you have the industrial phone church, the kids are walking to school, um, that work there. Um, these are just things that are popping in my head that I've seen. Um. I think signage. About slowing down, not going in. The wrong way to the school to turn around to come out because there's too much traffic, people getting impatient. Uh, yeah, so I have a few thoughts on it in my head. Um. But there's no, so.
Yeah.
Anthony.
What do uh, you have a number of doors, so where all the doors go to? So. I'm assuming the two end doors on the front elevation go to each of the units and is the middle just a face?
Hmm.
And then you've got, looks like two doors, which may or may not be existing on the. Left elevation, so I don't know what those are.
Yeah, um, if you forgive me, uh, I don't have the plans with me.
Okay.
Um, and I'm a little unfamiliar with this uh myself, but uh I will have an answer for you next meeting.
And then I, I think it's been brought up before, but I mean, certainly the show. Right, if there's any green space or area for the renters, right? I don't know, besides just parking a concrete, if there's gonna be. Whether it's a patio area or something, but some type of, whatever you propose.
Right.
I'd like to see that. Um, and again, I would agree with, you know, since you're parking and backing up and the kids are going to school, so. Uh, some type of signage or something. Um, and then certainly any lighting, right? Um. Needs to propose, and I think that was already in our planner's letter. And then anything um for the existing house. Um. And then. I'm assuming the colors are going to be, right, so when we get to that point, they'll need to submit all the the colors and the roofing and everything. Mr. Chair.
Yes, at the public hearing. So this is, it's like an architectural review board. You guys function the dual thing, okay?
Al- also, if you're gonna change the color of the existing house.
Mm-hmm.
The state, that stays the same, no color change, there's no, no window change, door change, nothing like that, fine. But you're gonna have to show color renditions of uh the new.
Yes, and to that effect, I guess it would help your, the architectural review side, if you saw. The existing building next to the the renovated building.
Yeah, and also, can you submit the? The layout of what what the units are looking like?
Yeah, plans for the units, yeah, absolutely.
The studio and then instead of two bedroom, whether it's two floors or one floor or whatever.
Yeah, um, do you, what, if you don't mind me asking, what what drawings do you? Yeah, um, do you, what, if you don't mind me asking, what what drawings do you? Do you currently have, is just the the same as up here, a site plan and elevations, okay, so you need the plans for the buildings. I I think the elevation for the existing building would, at least on the the church street side. At least so we could see that the two buildings next to each other in context, um. Uh, colors, siding. Roofing. I'm sure you have a list online somewhere where I could. Find all this great information.
Well, you can contact Sarah's office and Larry Pajee's office.
Okay.
And Victoria's office. Feel free to contact them anytime.
Mm-hmm.
For further information as far as the uh. Unless you can contact the building and village building inspector and he could tell you exactly what he needs.
Mm-hmm.
Information.
So we were just having a side conversation over here, um, the regarding the parking, um, and the fact that you have this swath of. Parking stalls immediately off of the the street, which basically creates just a wide curb cut. An uncontrolled curb cut for people to pull in and pull out of this this parking area.
Hmm.
Which is, which is a concern, and when I first looked at this, I I thought of that, but when you look at what's out there, it's pretty much what's out there now. Um, you know, that's basically how the Fishkill Glass operated, it was just a wide, a wide open gravel art area and they just pulled in and pulled out. Um, but this is a little different, I think, um, you're gonna have, if if you're gonna, if if these units are gonna be occupied, you're gonna have. Force, three or four cars in there, um, you know, at all times pulling in and pulling out, and it is a. Highly trafficked area, um, so. I think it's worth looking at modifying that parking to have a defined curb cut, a standard. You know, residential curb cut, um, and see if you can bring the parking into the property a little bit. Um, I know it's very tight, you may not be able to get the spaces that you're getting now.
Would, yeah, just to uh and um we'll let you finish your point, but.
That uh that that was, that was really it, I think it's worth evaluating, um, because it is a, it is a concern the way it is laid out now, and I understand why you've done it and. It it seems to make the most sense, it's the less, it's the least amount of disturbance, you're you're taking advantage of existing impervious area, but it. You know, I just think of cars pulling in and pulling out and not having a defined. Access, um and that that create can, definitely creating issues, you know, uh and a safety concern with.
Yeah, and I understand, I see the same thing, um, would it? I and I don't know if you guys know the answer, it might be in the the building code or zoning code, but if we went like. A double deep spot where like, you know, one lane would be for um. Yeah, each dwelling unit, basically, and I guess we'll figure out the ADA issue, but like. You know, that might not be your issue, but yeah, that, that something like that wouldn't leave a much of a yard, but um. You know, it is a very tight site. I'll go to the drawing board and uh we'll look at some some possibilities, I I don't think it's gonna be possible to do. A a single lane entry uh at all, but, you know, perhaps if we. Can look at some other approaches to it.
Yeah, see, take take a look and if you need some. Flexibility with uh backup aisles and um maybe even the size of the, what what size? Um, parking stalls are you proposing right now?
Uh, right now, we have ten feet.
Ten, okay.
So I don't know your the village code off the top of my head, if it's nine or ten, but nine would help, but it's gonna be very narrow.
And you have three stalls plus a an eight-foot.
There's four stalls plus eight feet for the the ADA uh van aisle.
So you may have room, if you had a um. A driveway at either end, either the, you know, the, the left or right. You need enough room for a parking stall and a backup aisle, and a parking stall is, you know, eighteen feet, and a backup aisle is around twenty-five feet. Anywhere twenty-four to twenty-six, so, um. You may have enough room to do that.
Right, and reorient the park.
And just have a twelve-foot wide drive aisle in, and then going into, you know, three. Or four parking stalls, if you can, if you can manage that, but you will be taking up the majority of that yard at that point, so.
Right, and it counters Anthony's comment, right, so.
Yeah.
That's the challenge, right, we'll do our best, uh, and for the parking, is there um? Um, forgive me if I'm. Like, for the drainage for that, is that permitted to go to the street, or we'd have to have like a catch basin or something?
So we would have to, if we're gonna be adding that much impervious, we'd probably be looking for some sort of mitigation, um. And that could be in the form of, you know, some subsurface coltex, it wouldn't be anything.
Mm-hmm.
Um, too intense.
Okay.
Relative to to what you're proposing here, but we would be looking at something.
Right.
There is existing drainage in the street, so we know that it it can accommodate some, or we would be looking for you to retain everything on the site. But we'd be looking for you to offset some of the additional runoff that would be generated by that new impervious.
Right, okay, based on, cause if it's gravel now, that's somewhat pervious, right, so.
That that would be considered impervious, so.
Impervious, okay.
That would be in your, in your favor, yeah.
Okay, excellent, um, yeah, we'll look at the parking. You know, maybe there's, there's other ideas too, um. But, yeah, that's a good start.
Just for your information, there in the village, uh changed their code some time back, the parking spots have to be ten foot.
Ten, ten feet is the requirement.
You're right.
Okay, so at least we have that in there.
There there is also, you may want to take a look, there is a land bank parking provision, that this board can waive some spaces.
Hmm.
Um, if you can show that they can be constructed, but it would be better to have green space rather than a parking space, we can land bank it, and then if it becomes a. Issue, the additional spaces can be built. So I'm not suggesting that we provide dwelling units that don't have a parking space with them, but you might want to consider. A person in a studio apartment that probably only needs one space, you may only need three spaces out there.
Right, so it's. If we would still have to land bank the fourth, but we could just build the three is kind of what you're suggesting.
Yeah, there is a land bank provision, so you may want to take a look at that.
And is that?
Zoning code.
Is that, does that have to be approved by zoning, I guess?
No, it's approved by this board, but they can only waive, we have to show it on the site plan, but it can be land banked. And not actually constructed, it helps to reduce the amount of impervious surface. Especially if you think you probably don't need that additional space.
Right, and if, you know, we could give them more backyard instead of, you know, and whatever.
But then it is shown on the approved plan, so if there were ever. A problem in the future with parking, then there's an agreement between the village and the property owner that it has to be constructed.
Right, so we would like.
If an issue came up.
In real, like if that came up, we could build out three spaces, we allocate for that fourth space.
Yes.
And, you know, and, you know, they they have to build it if if the situation arises, but and we show that on the the site plan.
It's already approved, it's already there, so it can just be built, you don't have to come back to this board for it.
Okay, and that's, uh, and that's called the land bank uh provision or something?
Yeah, one seventy-one ninety-six.
Yeah, just, you have to do a formal waiver request.
Okay.
It just, yeah, to become part of this application, if that's what you're proposing, you have to say it in your letter.
Okay, so that would, that would help that situation, is there any other waivers you can think of?
Yeah, that's the only one.
Well, thank you, um. Okay, so yeah, it's it's definitely, you know, now we've got through the the board of trustees, now we have our next challenge.
And you're at ZBA and then this will be your final board.
So is there anything else with, is like, I would, it wouldn't be fortunate if zoning brought up something. Um. You know, that that we weren't covering, so like the parking, land banking, we'd have to request a waiver and they should know about it, or that's only through.
No, that's, it's a site plan issue, they're only concerned with the variance that you've requested about the density.
Got you.
Yeah.
And, but if we wanted, say, is it possible to to get a variance or a waiver for reducing the parking?
You could seek a parking variance, but that would then change your application at the ZBA and you.
Right, and we can't get the public here, all right, so that's all set, basically.
That's all set.
Yeah.
Um, that's the tricky part of going to the ZBA before you come to this board, because sometimes site plan issues. Get worked out.
Right, well, worst case scenario is we have to go back to zoning, okay, all right, but fair enough, very pleased that we can do this concurrently and. You know, we'll deal with it.
What was that?
So, just for the record, we're waiting for a new submission for the October meeting, right, so then.
For the September meeting.
For our September, then we'll review it again and make a determination if it's ready to go to the county, we're not setting anything right now, correct?
No.
Okay. Then I had a question for the attorney, so do I need to recuse myself for any reason, since I was part of the review on the village board? For the rezoning? And if you need to think about it and get back, since we have some time, that's.
Yeah, I I've never been asked this specific question, um, let me, I just wanna look up the ethics rules, so I will get back to you by next meeting.
I'm just putting it on the record.
Let the record show that Joe Tessa has. Joe, do you have any comments or questions?
Okay, we'll see you in September then.
Yeah, or October, but uh. Right, we'll submit in September, so you'll see.
You, if you want to skip September, that means you're gonna have to go to October.
September, we.
Then you're, and then you're looking at next year.
Well, September, like, if we, all right, in theory, if we submit all the materials. We still have to come here to request the public. Um.
Hearing.
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 So if we, so automatically, we're on the September agenda.
You're on whatever agenda you make the submission for.
Mm-hmm.
So all I was, in the procedure that I laid out, I was just saying that the board's not ready tonight to set a public hearing for September.
Absolutely.
You certainly can make a submission for the September meeting. And have a review with this board, and then they can set the public hearing for October.
I can submit, can I submit things, let's say I submit things at the end of September for the October meeting, am I able? If all the uh requirements are satisfied, are you able to? Bring it to a public hearing in October, no, you need another.
Another meeting.
Pre-meeting, I would say.
Of hearing.
Okay, so then that would be, you know, if we able to submit. New materials in September, we can come to the October meeting and say if everything goes well. We may be ready for public hearing in November.
Correct.
Is more likely the the path.
Yeah.
Unless, you know.
But I mean, if you can update the plans and revise them, you can certainly do it for the September meeting, we just can't set the public hearing tonight for September.
I got, yeah, you can't, you you need, you need to set a public hearing in this board setting, right, we can't just do it off the. Yeah. And, okay, understood, thank you very much for clarifying everything.
Okay, and and in September, you have to have all your I's dotted and T's crossed.
Mm-hmm.
Answered all of the questions we have, and then at that point, if we feel that it was ready to go to the county. We would set a public hearing and submit it to the county in September.
So you need to, in order to approve. Get final appropriateness and site plan approval, you need the county.
No.
You don't, but they, all right, so.
Yeah, we we need the county approval, not to set the public hearing, but for any approval resolution, we have to have the county's review.
But we could have the the public hearing. And. Then it can go to the county?
No, we we always do the counter review before the public hearing, because if something changes during the public comment. Then it would have to go back to the county for re-review.
Got it, so if we did the October meeting, and we say we have all the materials, and um, at that point. Thirty, you know, if, I guess you guys determine if it goes to the county? Or.
Yeah, it it has to go to the county under two thirty-nine M.
Mm-hmm.
Has to be complete to go to the county.
Right.
So, the the next step is to just submit, the 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 better the submission, the less the board has to do. So it's better to do a full package, get it done, and then start the process, then try to piecemeal it and try to get the per timing, because if you. If if the board un- is unsent factory with what you present, it's gonna take longer anyway, so just submit a full application. And that'll make the process faster overall.
Okay, so let, so in October, if we have the the best fullest application we can have, we have that meeting. If it goes well, you guys don't have remaining comments, you can, you will send it to the county at that point, and then a month later. Hopefully, the the dates line up, or two months later, we have a public hearing with the county's approval already in hand, and. Hopefully, it's nice and easy for for you guys to to all vote, and uh, got it, all right, thank you very much for clarifying.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is C and J Properties Official LLC. Eleven eighty-three Main Street, will the applicant please come forward and identify yourself for the record?
Hello, I'm Gracie McGinnis from Hudson Design, the architects on this job, um. We were here last month with our initial application, and per the board's comments, we made a few. Initial adjustments, uh including moving the building and changing the layout a bit to. Bring it as far as we can towards the road to ki- kind of respect, respect the proportions of the historic district. So we moved the building up to align with the front setback of the adjacent buildings on this street in relation to the sidewalk. Um, and in doing so, we're able to move some of our parking to the rear of the building to address that comment as well, so there's not any. Parking directly along the street side, um, just addressing some of the. Comments we got from H and H, we don't have a. Plan it, planting plan or any lighting or trash enclosure details yet, um but are looking. I guess to continue the discussion on the parking on this revised layout.
All right, you wanna?
Um, yeah, I can, so just, I prepared a memo for the board to review, um. I kind of took this as an interim in between full submission to get feedback on the the layout.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Um, so I'll just cover like my new.
Yeah.
Comments, instead of, you know, the ones that we went over last month, um, so. I did have a question, is is the employee parking going to be physically connected to the parking lot?
Yeah, so, I saw your comments about that, um, there there is right now, this is an asphalt parking lot right now in the back of this residence, it used to be a business, I believe. Um, we would, and and it's just some some overgrown vegetation on the side, we would like it to be physically connected, however. I don't know that we're looking to get into easements necessarily, so we didn't include that parking in. Our parking count for the purpose of the waiver or the variance, I don't know if you wanna chime in on that, sure.
Uh, Jason Snyder with Beatty and Watson. Um, I believe the idea for showing the uh, the additional six spaces. Uh, on the on the owner's property was, there was concern about, um, like parties and stuff, so that would only be for like. Special occasion kind of thing, those, that would kind of like.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna count it as part of the official count, or it's going to be used as. Part of this property, even if it's on a temporary basis, I mean, I defer to the attorney, but I think we have to have an easement agreement in place.
So, yeah, so it has to be shown on the site plan, and it has to have an easement agreement or a plat note or something binding you to those six spaces. Otherwise, they can't be part of the official count and meet the parking requirements, because essentially, what if someone just decides? They don't want that, they don't wanna allow you to have parking anymore, then the village is screwed and they're out the six spaces. So that's kind of the idea, so you have to show it on a site plan, and you would have to commit that owner of the property to have those spaces for the life of the project.
And the owner of both properties, same, same person?
Yeah, so, and but you still need an easement, because let's say the owner of the property wants, it's two separate lots, correct? So let's say he wants to sell it, well, they still need to be bound by that agreement, so. So it'll go on the plat and it will go in a separate agreement. It won't stop the sale, but that sale will be subject to those six spots being utilized by the restaurant. If it was sold at a later date. That's why you need a legal agreement.
Yeah, okay, just an idea.
Yeah.
Just something, I know that was something that was brought up last time, like.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it is a good idea because I think employee parking will probably, I mean, it will greatly contribute and you're deficient in the spaces that you need. So, um, I don't know, maybe it's something that the owner will wanna consider doing since those parking spaces exist. And it makes sense to have the employees park over there, um, you know, not to the general public, but to have employee spaces, so, but if it is, that's something that they'll have to do. And then if there is gonna be a gate there, I, I, I don't know that you, maybe they would feel more comfortable with a gate, but I think you could probably just probably striping, like do not enter signs, employee parking only or something. Like, we just need details of how that's gonna be laid out and details on the plans for that.
I think the idea of the gate was kind of to touch on the issue of what happens if they sell one parcel or something, then it becomes, it's, it's fenced off. You know, separate properties, so, just a thought, wanted your feedback on it.
Yes. Also, for the, the proposed parking, I do, I do think this is a better layout with the building pushed up like that. I did wonder though if, if you could put dimensions on the parking areas so we can see if we need all of that pavement that's adjacent to the patio.
Yeah, I think we do.
We can make some. That, that, that can be some green space in there.
Yeah, and then same, same thing to address the, the bollards comment as the green space, we'll just, you know, preliminary layout, we'll develop that area a little bit. We are limited in height in the site, the intersection site distance zone to three feet, so we'll, we'll keep that in mind and see what we can get in there.
Um, and then with the patio moved to the front like that, um, I was just concerned with safety being on that corner, so I didn't know if there's gonna be bollards on there or some kind of.
Probably some sort of planters, more than anything, but yeah, definitely a bit of separation for the, most of the patio.
I think that was it. The rest of my comments were the ones that we had from last time.
Sarah, is it a waiver or a parking variance?
It's, it's a parking variance. So the waiver provision in the zoning code um, does allow this board to waive up to fifty percent of the parking, but it has to be shown that it can actually be constructed. Um, they don't have the physical space for that. Um, so they would have to actually seek a full parking variance from the ZBA.
Okay.
Um, how many spaces are they gonna need for the variance?
Depends on if they're going to include the six next.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't include them on this one. I think it gave us twenty, twenty-seven, I would say.
Yeah, they required sixty-nine and they have forty-two.
Can you pick up extra parking spaces in the back of the existing structure you show? One through six sort of up there, but can you pick up some more?
Potentially, if we went, if we went the route of the easement and, you know, legally binding the two properties, we could. But I, I don't know, just based on Sarah's comment, if, if we have to show that we can, you, you said we could, parking waiver is up to fifty percent, but you have to show that you could provide them, like similar to the land bank.
Provision, that is the only um, provision in the code that allows this board to waive the parking.
Okay.
And it, you have to show it as being able to be constructed.
So I think we, we have the space that we have, so.
You have the space that you have, so if the building isn't going to shrink or something, then yes, you absolutely have to get a parking variance.
And even if we were to provide, say, ten to twelve spaces total over here, we still would need around twenty parking waivers and that's, that's, sounds like it's basically not a possibility for this site.
For the waiver provision, no, because it's still wouldn't, you would have to be able to show the full sixty-nine parking spaces.
Okay.
Well, I guess the question is, do you have, does this board have to re, make a referral to the ZBA? Should we just, should we, I mean, are you in a position where you can refer us to the, to the zoning board for the variance?
That's up to you, if you wanna.
I mean, we're gonna need.
Yeah, you're gonna need the variance, right. No, I mean, no, we're, we're not forcing you to go to the ZBA. We're telling you that.
We need a referral. I mean, do, we need to be.
This board doesn't traditionally do formal referrals to the ZBA. Um, it is wise to come here first because of these exact issues of how they've talked about the layout and make sure the layout is in a place where this board is comfortable because it could impact your variance.
Yeah, I think that's where we left off last time. We wanted to, with this submission, we just wanted to make sure that you were, you were good with the, the location of the, the building with respect to the, to the site and the.
Yeah.
So I mean, at this point, uh, at this point, our next step really should be to go to the ZBA and request.
I, I think that's what I'm hearing from the board, if, if they're all in agreement that this is a better layout, that's really a question for them.
In agreement, right, so, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if we can make comments or not. I, I mean, I still have some serious concerns that you've got three things on here that just don't fit. So, and I had asked last time that you should get rid of something, right? So you should either do the residential or you should do the restaurant or you should get rid of the, I, I just think there's gonna be issues and if they waive or we do the parking variance, they're all gonna park on Main Street, Old Main Street, they're gonna park in All Sport, we're gonna be getting the calls. But our, Trish will be getting the calls now since I'm not there, right? I mean, I just think, I'm all for development, right, but I think appropriate development. And I know this is not up to us with the, the, the site distance, but we've all sat in the traffic, we know it backs up there, and when you come around there, right, we've all done it, myself included. You're on a straightaway and then they're going around that bend and they're gonna hit something, right? So, and they got Old Main Street. I, I like the idea of the rest, actually, I happen to like personally the idea of the, the residential, I think that's good. Um, we need rentals, in my personal opinion, but I just think you're putting too much on here. And I said it last time, and you, you know, if you're gonna do the parking next door, I thought that was a creative option, right? But you gotta do the easement or something, or, or maybe you merge the, I hate to say that, but you merge the, the two uh, parcels, but I, this, personally, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. That's just me, I'm one person. So, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I probably spoke out of turn.
That's, that's what the board is for.
And just to point out, uh, it, it does seem a little premature to be talking about a variance until some of the layout is a little bit more defined. Just to avoid the, an issue where, a situation where you're going back to either modify a variance or seek additional variances that come up as we work through the planning process. Um, I mean, there's, you're, you're right, right now, the, the circulation um, to your dumpster enclosure does not look at all feasible. So that's gonna need to be moved somewhere where it can be accessed. So, and is that going to impact your parking? Are you gonna lose more parking spots? Uh, so, I mean, that's not a, a, a deal breaker, it's just, you know, if you're really gonna lose another parking space, then you gotta now modify your variance, so.
Got that thing curved right there?
Yeah, exactly. So, there's, it, it's, it seems like the, the path now is to do what you're doing and collect as much information from the planning board and feedback from the planning board as you can to try to hone in on the layout. We didn't issue a new memo on this because there was, again, this is so conceptual. All of our prior comments are still pertinent, they were, they were conceptual in nature, so they all are, all of our comments remain. So, um, so I would just ask once you guys, if you guys are gonna be submitting any additional detail in the future, just provide responses to the comments. To both ours and to uh, uh, to Sarah's comments with, you know, on a cover letter with, with any future submissions. But again, there's, to, to highlight what's, what's happening tonight, I think the, the goal is to get as much feedback as you can um, and um, incorporate that into, into the plan. So you've heard at least one of the, uh, planning board members' opinions, so.
Yeah, no, thank you for the clarification. I just didn't want them thinking that, I didn't want them to continue going forward when may, you know, again, just one person, but whether, you know, I didn't want them to think that we were in favor and I had no idea what we are.
Agreed, yeah.
So, thank you. Um, water and sewer, is that just connecting onto fifty-two? Is that connecting next door?
That depends, I mean, that's what we're, it, I would imagine that they're gonna, connecting on fifty-two. So they were showing on the last uh, plan and
Right.
Uh, connecting right down, uh, on the s- the bottom of the page. That's north, south, east, west.
That's a village line even though it's a state?
It'll be a village, it's all village utility, but it'll, they'll need to incorporate that into their DOT permit.
Did you get a official approval from DOT as to uh, the curb cut, moving the curb cut over on, on the curb? Okay, and I have a problem here, this is, you know, the restaurant is one thing, but if you have tenants upstairs and you're showing here tenant spots eight, and then all of a sudden, uh, the tenants have friends come over, that's taking away from other parking spots. Would, I, I, I would consider eliminating the uh, the tenants completely.
Well, isn't, isn't that kinda situation built into the parking calculation? I mean, the, the eight required spots are per the code for the one per bedroom plus, I think a quarter of a spot.
Right.
So, I, I mean, how does that account?
If, if, if you eliminate the tenants, don't have any tenants there.
You're suggesting eliminate the residential.
Yeah.
I think that's what he's suggesting.
Okay.
And just have it as a commercial restaurant.
This is a commercial restaurant, then being a commercial restaurant, is it possible to drink it maybe?
And then maybe the parking would all.
The parking would be, but I'm, I'm, you know, like and the written. Restaurants are.
There's plenty of mixed, I mean, isn't that part of the, there's, there's plenty of mixed use structures in the village, I just don't remember the residential.
You know.
I don't think that they have any issue with the idea of mixed use, it's just uh, that they're saying it doesn't fit.
You're right.
They, they've expressed that they like the idea of the residential.
If the restaurant goes gung ho, which I hope it does, hope you make a whole lot of money and everything else like that there. But all of a sudden, if you have a wedding, uh, Christmas parties, whatever, however, you know, you're gonna end up, if you have a, a wedding there with a hundred people, a hundred fifty people. I mean, now, it was brought up at the last meeting, which about the uh, uh, state liquor authority and not issuing, you know, that's, that's not our privilege, that's between you and the liquor authority.
Sure.
So, we, we don't even look at, you know, you go into it and says, well, I want a restaurant, I liquor license, okay, well, fine. Deal with the liquor authority, and if they says, we're not gonna issue one, well, you should know that at the very beginning of the whole thing coming up, you know? So that's pretty, you know, that's something we don't, uh, we wouldn't consider, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, that's just a note as it.
Right.
Influences the building location from our design of the site plan, but yes, we have that handled.
The other thing is uh, the historical structures, you have uh, the church. You have one up by, well, number twenty-three, that lot up there, then further down uh, nine, uh, one on each corner, about nine in Main Street. So you're gonna have to deal with shipper?
Yep.
Have, have you guys considered what, what you would be doing, what the plan is for overflow parking? I mean.
I, I mean, I think, I think in an event, you know, it, there's a little bit of an assumption that there's not one car per person attending the event, right? And, and a little bit of our design is based on kinda that assumption.
If you have, I mean, this is a, a second location, right, of a, of a restaurant?
It'll be the primary location, so.
But if there's already a location? So, if, is it a comparable size?
To that restaurant? Uh, not really, no.
So it's larger?
I'm sorry, is it larger?
Bit of an expansion, yeah.
This is larger than what, what they have previously? So what I'm getting at is just if there's a comparison that can be made to an existing use, an, an existing operation that says we, you know, this is how many tables we have, this is the size of the restaurant, you know, this is typically, and this is the size of a parking lot and you can document that our parking lot's never full and, you know, provide some sort of documentation. And you, for your client, as much as the, the village, you would wanna have some sort of confidence that this, the parking size is not gonna be an issue. Because there, I'm, I'm not sure what the plan would be if there is in a situation where you're, you have an event and there's just no parking, because I think the only other available parking is across Route Nine.
Right.
So, and there's no real good pedestrian route to get there. So, so I think that's the reason for the concern. Um, you know, this isn't in the, the center of the village where there's on-street parking and municipal parking nearby. Um, this is kind of isolated on the other side of Route Nine. And so far, there hasn't been anything submitted or presented that gives any sort of mitigation to this significant relief that you're looking for, we'll, we'll be looking for from the ZBA for the parking, and that's a concern to the planning board.
Understood.
Yeah, I'm sorry if you already covered this, um, because I was discussing something with the attorney. But, so the event space is seventeen hundred square feet, the restaurant's two thousand square feet, and it says you're gonna have a hundred and twenty-two seats. So is a hundred and twenty-two seats the regular number of seats in the restaurant?
No, that's between the two.
Between the two.
Yeah.
I think it would be beneficial to provide us with a breakdown of how many of those seats are for the regular everyday restaurant and then how many are for the event space.
Sure.
And if they do have an event space in their current restaurant, do they or no?
No.
Okay, so then we don't have, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so would the event space basically be a vacant area in the restaurant until there is an event?
It's a, it would, it's, to answer your first question, it's uh, pretty much half and half. There's sixty seats allocated to the event space. And sixty-some to the restaurant space. And the event space is, is basically a separate room from the restaurant. So, the kitchen is kind of between the two and in the event space, the kitchen would be serving that. You know, and then that door closes off when, when it's not in use.
So I, I think to help, based on the questions that we've heard tonight and Christian, I think that's a great suggestion about some numbers about current restaurant capacity and number of cars that you typically have. I think some operational characteristics, like a narrative with that information will also help the board, like how this functions. Because if you're having an event, the restaurant isn't closed. Right? So you still have sixty people coming for the restaurant and sixty people coming for, or sixty seats coming for the event. And we have to plan for the worst case scenario.
Sure. And, and just to follow up on that question, if it became necessary that, you know, it could be one or, one or the other and the event space had to be closed while the restaurant was in use and vice versa, how would something like that be documented? If, you know, if we sat down with the owners and said, listen, we only have enough spaces for one, one or the other, you could use the event space on, rent it out on X day of the week, just, you know.
It would be in the resolution and it would be a site plan note that the code enforcer, whenever you got a noise complaint or they saw too many cars in the parking lot, you could get shut down because you would have, um, each would be a notice of violation.
Sure.
Violating your site plan. Um, and to piggyback off of the planner and the engineer, um, I, I think comparisons, especially if you don't have established numbers, um, I think your client, it might be beneficial to hire an actual parking engineer and get a parking study if you're to seek the variance. Um, I'm gonna recommend to the board that maybe you do a coordinated review, um, since this is an unlisted action, because I think it'd be helpful for the ZBA to have an idea of the numbers of what people are coming in and out of the parking lot before they make their variance decision. And it's a type two, um, action if it's separate. So even though I know you don't typically coordinate unlisted, it's just my recommendation.
And, and what's a coordinated review?
So under Seeker, there is different kinds of review, so Seeker is the State Environmental Review Quality Act. So, type one is the height, most heightened scrutiny, and um, under that is unlisted, and that's a. And that's a lower scrutiny, but it still requires a full review by the board. And then, uh. A type-two doesn't require, um, type, doesn't require environmental review, and unlisted is kind of like an in-between. So the board will still be reviewing, you know, the traffic safety, um, will be part of that environmental review as well as a code review. So if the board is interested in a parking study, it's something they can definitely ask for.
I have another question here. At one time, many moons ago, there was a historical structure on this thing. And when the property owners and bought it way back when, they just tore it down. Of course, back then, the village didn't have any codes or nothing in the zoning or structural. Uh, preservation. When that went down, that's when everybody jumped up and says, you can't do that. And then after that, uh. The village started creating historical zones and looking at solo structures. I'm wondering is, considering there was one there at one time, when architectural. Dig or something like that, who who would, who would?
So.
Something like that.
You guys don't have your EAF, so when you submit again, be submit a full, um, you could submit a short form, EAF, um. I don't have it.
No, archeological was tagged and it's in our comment memo.
Right.
They need to be.
Yep.
I apologize, I filling in and I don't have the entire file in front of me. Um, I don't have it, so yeah, that's, you're gonna look to the. EAF and since the EAF tagged it, you're gonna need, um, you know, a letter from shipper. And if a dig is required, I have to, I don't have it in front of me, so I have to look into actually what it says. But, you know, if it's, if it's tagged as a potential, they're gonna have to show that a phase one is not needed.
I I don't know, it looks like. Major problem here because, uh. I I can't see anybody parking in ShopRite and walking all the way from ShopRite all the way to here. And of course, there's nothing. On the old Main Street side where you couldn't do any over. Overflow parking, that's all private property. Um. Uh, I suggest that, uh, go back and find out, do you really need the tenants? If you don't need the tenants, um, just have the restaurant there. You know, let's say. So you need piece of property and.
The tenants are, the tenants are. I mean, they're they're caught, they're caught, I mean, that that's where they're gonna make their, the money. I mean, that that's where they're gonna get revenue for the, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, it's only eight spots, so they're not gonna lose the tenants. I I don't think that's.
But I think it'll be shrinking down the operation or restricting their operation.
Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna eliminate the 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 residential. I I can't see them doing that. And uh, even if we did, it's only eight spots. So, um.
So twenty spaces under.
We might have to look at, um.
Event space.
Design space or something, so.
Well, you have some homework to do. Like I said, uh, you know, it's. A big piece of uh structure on a small piece of property, you know? And, uh. Like Anthony pointed out there, it says, you know, coming around that corner, I've come around that corner more than once to find a car stop, but the traffic was whooped. And now you're having somebody trying to act in in, go in and exit at the same time. And at night, it's even more difficult, so. You have to definitely need a traffic study. If he's ability.
You know, um. When I looked on, uh, I guess it was Google, not that. Are there any encroachment from the existing houses behind? When you look on the aerials, it looks a little. Things that may, you might have to kick some people off, so I don't know if you've looked at that.
I I think I I look at that.
The survey shows, um, our interiors.
I think, I think the the aerials are not so accurate. I ran into the same issue in your ser- the survey shows that.
Just bring it up as a.
But yeah, no, I I had the same, same issue.
If it's been vacant for however long, people tend to.
Right. As much justification as you can provide for. Variances that you guys are needing and try to mitigate the concerns that the planning board is raising.
Is there a point? Not tonight, but is it at a certain point through our process here where you guys are gonna kind of give the green light to go to the zoning board, not, not. A referral, but just like, you know, we have it figured out to this, you know, level, it's time to go there.
I think it'll depend on. Each submission, you know, how however far you uh are able to take it with each submission, so, and I don't think they'll give you a green light, but. Having a candid conversation like this, you know, and I'm sure the the board would be happy to give you feedback as will we. On whether or not we feel it's appropriate to to go at that point.
I think a good indicator is, I believe this needs to go to county as well, right? So county needs a full plan and a public hearing is required, and that's typically how you know you're far enough along, at least for the board to review your plan.
Got it.
We'll get a lot further ago before we even think about.
Yep, I know. Exactly.
Yeah.
Sandra. My next question is.
To put what you're wanting to put.
Sorry.
No, that's, to put what you're wanting to put on there. I I'm in agreement with, you know. There's a lot that has to be looked at. You know, the traffic that gets backed up there, now you're having people trying to cross over, you know. You're having an event space and we all know what happens at events. You say, I can hold this many people, and then you have people inviting more people. And then. You don't have enough stops, you know, where are they gonna park? Where where is the overflow gonna go? Um. There's other things I see on here, you know, and just. Knowing how the traffic can be at what time of day. A lot that has to be looked at, I think a little further than what you have here. And that's just me being honest and fair.
Yeah.
Um, I'm a firm supporter, and when you own a property, you have the right to fit in the lines and develop what you need and what you want and how you want. Obviously, to just maintain the historical accuracy and then also the site usage. So I understand, I wasn't at the July, um, meeting I was away, so this is, you know, I saw the stuff that I wasn't privy for the conversations. Finding out that the owner owns this property next door. If I'm looking at it correctly, behind that two-story frame dwelling, could they put that parking up against the building and utilize this differently? Could they switch stuff around here if that that's where you needed to access stuff? And then I look at, you know, they said the dumpster doesn't make sense here because that curb, I don't know how the truck's gonna get in to get it. But because we have a concern of the driving with the backup. When you're coming around, right where people, it's like slamming on the brakes, could we do the entrance over here? More and and, you know what I mean, close this, put the dumpsters over here. Have this be the in and out to get left, to get right, if that's where your arrows go. I don't know, my, you know, my mind goes and. I understand, you know, the the tenant space is where you get the monthly income, so you don't want to, and you're probably not gonna be able to get rid of that. And then, you know, like reutilize the event space to be able to host, so it's, there's so many variables and options that it's. I said, that's why I started with, if I own the property and I wanna develop it, I obviously, you know, maintain the the law and the. The code and everything, and I wanna do what I gotta do, you know, so that, so I'm I'm, I support both and. I don't know, yeah, it's just, it's the the intricacies, I guess.
I mean, the the curb cut is proposed at the.
This thing here?
Yeah, at the, at the best, that's, that we run with DOT and that's.
That's what they advise?
That was the best location, yeah.
Cause I would think, I don't know why they would say at the curb. This is what doesn't make sense to me logistically.
Because.
I I would think it would have to be.
I think that's existing up there, right?
No.
No, it's here.
No, the existing is is more towards the intersection.
Oh, no, the existing is here, right?
No, it's a little, it's like halfway.
Halfway, that's that in here?
About, yeah, it's it's like a finger.
Oh, like a a word. By where, Old Main Street?
Yeah. Th- this gives you the the best site distance both ways, cause if if you go more this, if you go more towards the intersection, you can't see past that fence.
Right.
Cause the fence goes all the way to the corner.
Okay.
So you're, you see, we're just clipping that right there. So if you if you come this way more, you can't see that way through the fence.
And but what about going over here?
Go, then then you're not, then you're not ninety, then then you can't.
See anything coming around here?
Yeah. Yeah, then then you, then you can't see, uh, then you can't see around this way.
Where's the, where's the crossroad with that white building here? That's right here.
No, the, this, the, the road is, the other road is like.
The other road is here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I would think the road should go in and out this way.
And then it's not ninety degrees. The the state likes a ninety degrees.
Likes or has to have legally. You know what I'm saying? Like, there's a difference of what they like versus what it has to be, because that's what I would, there's a, there's a huge difference in that verbiage, right? So that changes the whole usage, and then if you can get back with using those other spaces, that allocates the spaces, and I still probably need the variance and everything. This, this is where, uh, the the way I'm visualizing, if that white building's here with that side road, that's where that curve is. That's where the issues are gonna be for the, for the.
Yeah, so any, actually, that's a good, so any future submittals? Could you show across the street so we have a better? Um.
I'm just trying to.
Point, yeah, better visualization, right? Cause that's what I'm trying to hatch up to.
I mean, if they own the other one, they'd be able to do, like the lawyer's site, right? You could legally do whatever you have to do and deed it in.
Right.
Right? And mandate it that it's there, and they could utilize all of this space for more parking. That could probably be configured differently. And again, I don't know if that does what it does with the numbers. Totally, and but then you have this constant, it's still gonna come back to just if you have the restaurant open, and we said a hundred. And twenty-two seats was both the restaurant and the event space, was that right?
Hmm.
How many, and then what is just a restaurant if there's no event?
Uh, I think it's sixty, sixty or sixty-one. It's it's about split down the middle, yes.
Sixty-one, huh?
Yeah, I I that's settled, uh, as if you have, if you have even just a big college graduation, I don't know. Not even a wedding, right? Cause that that gets big, right, something.
There, there's a bar.
Yeah, a small, small bar part of the restaurant, it's like, let them ten seats, just at at the counter, it's about eight seats.
From the zoning, does that, do the ten seats count into the, the bar?
Yeah, it counts as a restaurant.
That's in your calculation.
Yes, yeah, that's part of the restaurant seat count.
God.
Got it.
I mean, has, has the applicant just wanted, has they ever looked at merging the lots? Have they just like?
It didn't, it it's just come up recently, so.
Cause like, I mean, if you merge the lots, you could play around then with setbacks, you can play around. I mean, there's no setbacks, but you can play around with the. Configuration, uh, it's all one lot.
If they, if they merged the lots, you could technically take all your, all of your tenants here. Put them all in that building, extend that building, make that building bigger, do whatever you want here, and then make this whatever you want. That that can then go just in here for event space and restaurant. You could put all the tenants in this building, cause that building has rentals right now, cause I see the people going in and out of it, and so does this.
Well, they, the owners live there, so that's.
The owners live in this one?
Yeah, that's their home, so, um, but yeah, parking, parking could be reconfigured, certainly.
Yeah.
If that was the case, but, I mean, even if we went that route, like what's? With the process of establishing an easement, et cetera, like, you know, that's not gonna happen anytime soon.
Right, so if you, if you were to merge the lots, it would become one lot. And then, eh, I would recommend, like we did, like Christian had said in his memo, we did in ours. Going to DOT and talking about curb cuts, because potentially, I know you're getting closer to the intersection here. But if you merge these lots, you could move the restaurant over a little, providing entrance drive between the existing two-story frame home and the restaurant. And then have parking that goes in the back, connect them. This could maybe go away, which then gives you additional area for parking. So it's a thought that you might wanna.
That's one.
Explore. See where you end up, yeah.
Yeah, it it may drastically increase the capacity of the site and really improve the access.
I.
It it still needs to be looked at closely, as far as, it's a tough spot, but it it at least increases it, your options.
Fair, yeah, but a- and you said that you spoke to DOT already about the curb cut, so you may wanna pitch. Another location to them before you get too far into design.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
That's all the agenda items we got for tonight. Uh. I will not be at the next meeting, I'll be on vacation. So Teresa will run the show. Uh, please, uh, let. Jen here know that, uh, you'll be able to meet, make the meeting in in time, so, good night. Well, Cassandra.
Well.
Anybody have any comments? No? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourned then.
Adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion second, all in favor? Close, carry. Thank you.